It's kinda weird.
Meetings called to order. Sorry, public hearing first on item number one. We're gonna have a public hearing. Adoption of ordinance number four two seven seven. And ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six Capitol Outlet budget. Anyone that wants to speak for it or against? No speaker, we'll move on, we're gonna close the public hearing. And we're gonna do call to order.
Lord, may your goodness and love be present among us today. Bless the city Gonzales with unity, hope, and vision. We give you thanks for the many gifts you've given us. We ask for your guidance and ask that you build in us a deep respect for one another. We ask that you watch over and protect all police officers, firemen, city workers, and all the citizens of Gonzales. We ask this in your name, amen.
Roll call, Ms. Terry.
Here.
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 Number five, presentation by South Central Planning and Development Commission regarding operation of the city's planning and zoning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kevin Belonge. I'm CEO of South Central Planning and Development Commission located in Houma, Louisiana. We're one of the eight regional planning commissions in the state. We serve the parishes of the River Parishes, St. Charles, St. John, St. James, St. Mary, LaFouche, Assumption, and Terrebonne. These other districts have similar activities. We've been around for about fifty-two years. Various projects with federal government, state government, it's not an instrumentality that we have not worked with. But our prime focus is development of software, code enforcement, project management, lending. We do a lot of business lending in this area particularly. We do a lot of comprehensive planning. I was fortunate to meet the mayor several months ago. We've had some good discussions just in generalities. We later found out that there was a need that possibly we could assist with. We do this in our area. We have a huge group of planners that we work in our office. We have a tremendous amount of capacity. We've been doing this myself, I've been doing it for thirty-eight years. I have Mr. Patrick Gordon, who I'm gonna introduce and ask him to come up and talk a little bit about how he manages planning commissions, zoning commissions, and boards of adjustments. I was fortunate in getting out of college, went to work for Pat. Now Pat works with me, so it's a little payback time, just kidding. But he and I have had a really good relationship. We have some extremely good planners on board. They've done a variety of things from floodplain management, zoning, comprehensive planning. You name it, we do it, floodplain management, and he'll talk a little bit about that. But without any further ado, and I'll be available for questions if you should have any. If I could call on Pat Gordon.
Thank you, Kevin, I'm Pat Gordon. I'm the planning director over at South Central Planning. And prior to being at South Central Planning, I was the planning director and parish manager in Terrebonne Parish for thirty-seven years. So I worked with the Houma-Terrebonne Regional Planning Commission for almost forty years because I worked with South Central Planning even when I got out of college. So I've been doing this for a while, and we have eight planners at South Central Planning right now. And we do zoning, land use type regulations for many of our parishes, southern parishes that we have in the South Central Planning region. And in fact, we probably a few years back, we did an extension to the Terrebonne Parish zoning ordinance and took in two orange areas and re-zoned that. So we feel very confident that we could step in as your professional planners on board to review and run the meetings, put the agendas together for the planning commission, the zoning commission, as well as the board of adjustments for any variances that would be necessary. We do have a lot of experience in comprehensive planning. We do know that your comprehensive plan was done back in two thousand fifteen and should be updated every five years. That might be something that we could talk about later on in the future. But right now, I think there's a proposal before you for our services at one hundred and thirty-five thousand for one year. And if that was acceptable by y'all, we would certainly put together a contract and bring it forward at the next council meeting and see if we can get rolling with, and of course, go into some type of transition with All South in their services right now. In fact, the gentleman with All South is actually here, if y'all have any questions for him or y'all. Any questions?
You said you have eight planners?
Yes, sir.
Are they engineers or just planners?
No, we're a planning firm, not an engineering firm.
I was just asking.
Yeah. And but we do have, we do work with engineers, of course. And we do a lot of grant management, grant applications. I'd say we do transportation planning, similar to what Capitol Planning Commission does for y'all with the MPO. We do the same thing for our region, for the Houma-Tibetan MPO. So we're very involved in all the transportation grants as well. Not that we would wanna jump into that, and Jamie Setz and his group does a great job.
Yeah, okay, I was just, right now, I mean, like you said, we working with All South and I think we advertising right now for planning director, so, you know, I would like to, I would just take it on advisement. I think it looks good, but I'm not ready to make a move on this, you know? I mean, I'd like to do a little more research, you know, not, I mean, I know you're a respectable company. We're kinda in between things right now, you know? So I would just, you know, I like the way everything looks, and I would just like to take it on advisement, you know? And see what we got applying to our, to the city right now. It's just my concern, you know?
I do believe the intent is for All South to continue doing some of the engineering services with them. So I don't think all of that's being taken away from them. It's just the planning expertise.
Okay, thank you.
If you have no more questions, I just wanna briefly touch on that. So from the perspective of what they do, I can't speak on that or the proposal or anything of that nature. But just from All South's perspective, just so everybody understands, when we started with y'all, you know, we're an engineering company, right? And that's what we do, that's what we do every day. Faced with the issue of Justin Dupree kind of abruptly moving on, right? The city approached us and said, we have a need, don't really have a solution at this moment. We stepped in to help fill that need, fill that void for you all, you know? And we've done so, we've kept things moving for the past, I guess this is June, for the past six, five, six months in that department. Done so well, but I'm the first to say this is not what we do every day. So as the administration has continued to look, whether it be these folks or other folks, someone that does this every day, I would fully support, you know, that consideration and happy and proud of what we've done for y'all for the past six months in that particular department, eager and very willing to go back to doing the engineering that we do every day for you guys.
And I would be more than willing to answer any other questions. You know, you raised a good point. The issue is, do they have planners out and about right now? There are planners having someone skilled and proficient in doing this type of work from a planning commission, zoning commission, and also board of adjustments, and understanding just how government works. It's quite hard to find someone. And we're willing to work as long as you want us to. It could be a month, it could be two months, it could be ten years. We just wanna be able to provide you the ability to sustain yourselves even while you're going through the process of finding someone.
Just wanted to mention. Alright, thank you.
Number six, approve the minutes of a public hearing of the mayor and the city council taken on Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Yes.
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 Number seven, approve the minutes of a regular meeting of the mayor and the city council taken on Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
I think Councilwoman Terry has a question first before pertaining to the minute.
Yeah, the ordinance forty-two seventy-nine or seventy-six, the fiscal year budget was introduced. Is this correct, public hearing and final vote?
Yes.
There seemed to be some confusion.
Yeah, that is, we introduced.
Is this correct?
Yeah, we had a public hearing, now we're gonna, yeah, it's gonna be an ordinance now.
Mr. Davis, is this correct?
I can't recall the exact minutes, but I believe this was a motion by Councilman Boudreaux, is that correct? You recall that, Mr. Boudreaux?
From the Capitol Outlet?
The fiscal year general fund. Or was it your motion to introduce the fire and police?
Fire and police. That's what it was. Fire and police.
Nobody seconded it. Was somebody supposed to second this or not? Second. It's good?
So I guess, I guess the question is, does the minutes reflect your motion or your introduction that day?
It wasn't for the, it was just for fire and police, if I remember right.
So?
It wasn't general.
So apparently there's discrepancy in the minutes, what is to the Councilman Boudreaux and what he can do there?
Can I say something?
It wasn't for Capitol Outlet?
I think it was Capitol Outlet.
This is general fund budget.
Yes. Because the three items were entered by Mehmet, and Kirk was the one to make a motion to accept that.
Yeah, it was Capitol.
Capitol Outlet, not general budget.
Right.
I guess the minutes would need to be, need to reflect that.
It says general fund budget. It's on the second page. So we can approve with corrections? We can approve with corrections?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And what are those corrections, Mr. Councilman Boudreaux?
I'll make a motion that we amend the minutes to say Capitol Outlet budget.
We need a second?
A second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Number seven. Approve the minutes of a regular meeting of the mayor and the city council taken on Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Subject to the amendments made.
Make the motion to approve?
A second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Number eight, approve special event permit request of Renee DeLuce Martanders with Conway Development to have their annual independence celebration on Thursday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Hi, I'm Renee Matamoros, I represent Conway Development, and we have been hosting this event for years. It's our annual fireworks celebration, we have kids' activities, live music, food trucks, and more. It's a great time, so we love the approval to have that again, actually this Thursday, six to nine p.m.
I make a motion to approve, it's a goodie bit, been a couple times.
A second.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Number nine, approve special event permit request of Elaine and Eric Willoughby with the Travis Manu Foundation to have a nine-one-one heroes run on Saturday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five at River Parish Community College.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Ella Willoughby, and I'm the race director for the Baton Rouge nine-eleven heroes run, which will take place on Saturday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at River Parish's Community College. I'm here tonight to respectfully request a special events permit and a temporary road closure to help us host this important event safely and successfully. The nine-eleven heroes run is part of a national race series organized by the Travis Manion Foundation, a nonprofit that empowers veterans and families of the fallen heroes to lead the next generation in developing strong character and a mindset of selfless service. This event encourages people of all ages, especially kids and teens, to get active, connect with their community, and honor those who serve and sacrifice. As a military child, I've always felt a deep connection to service. Running has been a big part of my life, and working with the Travis Manion Foundation has given me the opportunity to use my passion and talents to build something bigger than myself. Through this race, I've been able to grow as leader while giving back to a cause that means so much to me and my family. Last year, our local race brought together more than two hundred participants and raised over ten thousand dollars to support the foundation's mission. We are excited to build on that momentum and create another meaningful impactful event this year. To ensure everyone's safety, I'm requesting the temporary closure of West Ianborn Parkway from the traffic light at Highway forty-four to the stop sign at the Lamar Dixon Soccer Fields from seven-thirty a.m. to ten-thirty a.m. Our opening ceremonies will begin at eight a.m., and the race start is at eight-thirty a.m. I've already been in contact with both the local police department and the Ascension Parish Sheriff's Office, and they're supportive and ready to assist with traffic control and public safety. I'm asking for the city's support in helping us coordinate those events and officially approve the road closure. Thank you all for your time and for considering this request. I'd be happy to answer any more questions you might have.
Make the motion to approve?
A second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Number ten, request permission from the formally approved special event permit for a trunk or treat scheduled for Saturday, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-five to change locations from Cabela's Parkway to Tanga Outlet.
Good evening, yes, I was here a few months back getting approval. It has grown so much over the past five years, this is year six that we go from the satellite station parking lot with approximately a hundred parking spots to Tanga with roughly fifteen hundred. Better lighting, more better crowd control, more parking. It'll help boost the sales in the Tanga Outlet malls and all those local businesses, it's safer. In case it rains, we can move it under overhang instead of canceling the whole event. Four thousand came out last year, so we're hoping to double that this year, so.
Tanger's good? Chief, you're good? So I make a motion to amend it to move to Tanger.
A second.
Yes.
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 Number eleven, request authorization for Mayor Rowley to commit negotiation with Hyundai Steel for use of Gonzales Civic Center.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council. Before we commence, Hyundai Steel has approached the parish and the AEDC, Kate MacArthur, they approached us. They're looking for a big box to convert to office space for two years. Kate MacArthur kinda told them that the only potential space in the parish is our civic center. So they requested us to make a proposal to them. It's not as simple as that, being that this is such an involved process, unless the council wants to pursue this, you gotta, you can only do this by ordinance, so there's an ordinance procedure. Unless there's a will to do this, we just shouldn't not waste our time. So if there is no will for that, that's kinda why we're looking for authorization. Do you want us to start negotiating with Hyundai Steel to lease the civic center to them for two years? And if so, you know, it would help to kinda get, what do y'all think the right valuation would be? So if you do want us to do this, we request your input on the numbers. It is a, the law's pretty detailed about the lease of public properties. It would have to be a determination that it's no longer of any public use. So I think that may be a sticking point, too, I don't know that. If that declaration, that determination would be made, it would require an ordinance to be passed to, I mean, you gotta put it out for a public bid, too. If you are putting out the lease, you can do that after ten years here, but you would have to put that out for a public bid and see if anybody else wanted to lease it, too. So it's an involved process, they've kinda pressured us, they want it as soon as they can get it, but they wouldn't be ready to move into next year, so whatever the will the council is, you say no, we wouldn't hurt anybody's feelings.
Thank you, any question?
J.C., I would like to, first, before we do any negotiation, let J.C. come back with a report, tell us what we rent where, like, you know, events, and then maybe get legal, look into this. Did you look into this, Alan?
Just briefly, before the meeting.
Before we decide on it, I would like to have at least some legal advice and some, a report from you, J.C., on the rent, what weekly rent we get, you know, and who rents it, and that way we can make a decision. Because we gotta shut it down to the public, I think we need to look at all that.
Councilman Boudrea brings up a good point, because any citizen could come and challenge in court and seek a restraining order. If we enacted this and put it in play, any citizen, have standing, come and seek a restraining order through the district court. So there's a lot of i's and t's that's out and across here, so.
Wait, I do have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
As far as the fee schedule for this particular lease agreement, would it follow the same fee schedule that's already in place with the civic center now?
I think that would be the will of the mayor and the council. I think that would be the will of the mayor and the council. I think we can make proposal. We can propose anything you ever want to propose. That's all the information we got. I mean, they're looking for a roughly twenty thousand foot, square foot office box space they can convert into offices for two years until they can build their own office space across the river.
Okay.
So, that's all the information we got. We haven't, I've never spoken to Hyundai, just Kate MacArthur from AEDC and Ruth Phillips with the parish. So we'll find one as that goes, so don't give it away.
Uh, wait.
Yes, ma'am.
They're, they're looking to lease the building for two years, correct?
That's correct, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will the city council be able to obtain all of the information?
It's, you can do, this is kind of new ground here, right? We got that. This is a blank slate. You can ask for and demand and request and propose whatever y'all would decide to propose. It would, ultimately, it has to be done by ordinance, which would require a majority vote of the council. So anything you want to ask, feel free, whatever information. I mean, they're asking us. We're not, we didn't reach out to them. They're reaching out to us.
Yeah, they asked us to use the civic center.
Starting the twenty-sixth, and the only other, it's gonna be a two-year term. That's how long they think it will take them to build their new facilities for their clerical and office staff across the river close to that project, is what I'm, what I would tell them.
Yeah, I think we would need the information before we make a decision.
Whatever, I mean, there's not a lot available, but whatever we got, you're more than welcome to.
Wait, can you email me some additional information on that, so I can do some research and get information?
Okay, yeah, I'll get y'all. There's a couple cases that happened to run across that didn't look like they were pertinent, but I don't want to step on your toes on that, so I'll send you what I got.
What is the reason they want to use it on this side of the river in opposed to the other side?
No, they would have preferred to you to be on the west side. They just couldn't find a suitable facility. That's what I was telling you. I think Kate MacArthur offered them one of the women buildings that they, I don't know if it was, whatever was offered, they didn't go for it, for whatever reason. So, I mean, they spent five-point-five billion dollars over there, so maybe it's an opportunity to generate some funds here. But that's up to you guys.
Yeah.
I would like to say, like I said, let J.C. give me some, give us some information. Run rent for the last two years for us and get Alan to look at it further before we move.
Yeah, they didn't impose any timeline. They just requested a proposal from us. So the only other timeline I'm aware of, on the date that was mentioned, is that they want to move into it in early twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that building wouldn't have to be closed to the public for two years, completely closed. So we definitely need additional information.
No, no, it's a difficult decision, right?
Yeah.
So the initial determination has to be a determination that it's no longer has it public use. I don't even know, I don't know if that, if that.
So this, this request is only to obtain information, am I correct? Just to obtain information to bring back to us?
No, they're asking us for a proposal, right? Now, do we need information from them? I think we can ask for anything we choose to ask for.
I think we need the information first before we can do a proposal.
Okay. You want information from Hyundai?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need, before we can make a decision.
All right, yeah, that's fair.
We need, we need all the necessary information.
Where?
Before a decision.
Hundred-plus workers. One of the text messages I got, they're looking for a little bit over, capacity for a little bit over a hundred workers, two years. I think parking, you know, I think that parking wouldn't be a problem, because I think there's a lot of car flowing going on. Mayor Allen and I talked to some developed, Korean developers that are coming and talking about buying subdivisions, building subdivisions to specifically house our workers. So, I mean, money shouldn't be the issue for these guys, but what price you want to, you know, a lot of people are very endeared with the civic center, me being one of them, right? What's, what's that worth for you? You know, I don't know, whoever you decide to cast your vote, and whatever you decide to base that vote on is, is your priority. But we'll get you, all the information we can get from them, we will forward immediately to you. If there are any specific questions you'd like to ask, let me know what they are, and I'll put them forward. You good, Mayor?
Thank you. Number twelve.
It's just a request.
Yeah, it's just a request.
I think we wait on this, if I can just wait. I want to, instead of giving you permission to negotiate, let's check into what we rent. Is it legal for us to rent a public building that we rent out? Check all that out before we even move forward. That way, do I need to make a motion about this?
Table it.
Table it. Until you can look into everything. You know?
Yeah, we can table it for legal review without date for now, and then they can reintroduce it on the agenda at a later time.
Okay, okay. Then, do I need to make a motion to table it?
Yes.
If I make a motion to table it, do we get legal advice and J.C. to come up with the numbers and look how much we rented it for the public and see if we can even do this public building, best rented.
I'll second.
Hey, Roll Call vote, Councilwoman Cynthia Bragg James?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Langer?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hutter?
Yes.
Number twelve. Request to terminate escrow agreement between S.L.C. and L.L.C. in the city of Gonzales regarding a retention pond associated with the Orleans Place subdivision.
Mayor and council, if it pleases everyone, I'd ask for a motion to table. We were waiting on some additional information that we did not quite get in time, so would ask to table through a follow-up meeting. Mr. Fourier, as well, would like to attend to represent his client, which is S.L.C., so as well table for him to attend.
Okay. I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Hey, Roll Call vote, Councilwoman Cynthia Bragg James?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Langer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hutter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number thirteen. Final vote on ordinance number four-two-seven-seven and ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, capital outlet budget.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
It's a final vote.
It's a final vote, so you don't need a motion in a second.
Okay.
Just a regular vote.
Hey, Roll Call vote, Councilwoman Cynthia Bragg James?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Langer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes. Yes.
Number fourteen. In accordance with L.A.R.S. four-two-one-nine-one, the city of Gonzales hereby announces a public hearing of the city of Gonzales Council will be held at its regular meeting place, City Hall, one-twenty South Armour Boulevard, Gonzales, Louisiana, on Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at five-thirty P.M. to consider adoption of the twenty-twenty-five property tax millage rate.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So this item was actually voted on at the May twenty-fifth, at the May twenty-fifth regular meeting, although there were a few issues that the assessors office brought up when we sent over the paperwork with them, so they have access to clean, clean a few things up. Specifically, I did have an error in there on the millages that were listed on that ordinance. They should have been five-point-two-eight and three-point-two-seven for general alimony and fire department respectively. When I prepared that document, I picked up the pre, pre-roll forward rates of the pre-reassessment rates from last year. So this is not an increase. These are the legally authorized rates by the assessors office, but I put the long millage numbers on there. Secondly, they did access to list those numbers, the millage amounts in the minutes of the meeting was the other thing that they requested. Any questions?
So we need to reintroduce the resolution, or?
Yes. What we're asking is that we reintroduce that resolution and publish it and come back. It says twenty-third. Is that right?
Yeah, it's today.
That's June, it's today.
Mr. Davis, do we have to reintroduce that resolution since it was already introduced?
If it's already been, I mean, introduced, it doesn't need to be reintroduced.
But we amended it to read this.
For the millage?
Yeah.
So if you changed it, then you probably need to publish it.
Yeah. So if we could, Ms. Terry Wood, you know the dates that would be for the next, and then July twenty-eighth. I think we need to do the twenty-eighth because of the timing. So if we could change that to the, to have the hearing on the twenty-eighth of July. And the assessors office.
Twenty-eighth of July or June?
Yes, twenty-eighth of July.
July?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we'll publish it again in the paper, and then I have that public hearing, you know, twenty-eighth of July. That, that timing will be sufficient for the assessors office. I did check with them on that.
So you set in a hearing for July twenty-eighth?
So, okay. So we just, we need to reintroduce this resolution with the proper millages and change the date to July twenty-eighth. Okay. So I've concluded that we approved a resolution with the correct millages. City of Gonzales General, five-twenty-eight, and the City of Gonzales Department, three-point-two-seven. The meeting, the public hearing will be held July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Taylor.
Councilwoman Cynthia Bragg James?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Langer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
You want to add your item now?
Yes, sir. Council, I had requested that the mayor add a amendment to the agenda for consideration of selecting an audit firm for the city's May thirty-one, twenty twenty-five fiscal year-end audit. It was inadvertently left off, but when we did go through an RFP process, we had four firms respond to that RFP. We have a recommendation on a firm for you tonight if you choose to do so.
So, we just need to introduce this to be put on the agenda, correct?
Correct. We need a, to amend the agenda. We did have on the RFP that we would be making a recommendation tonight to the council, so I'm just trying to follow that schedule.
Okay. I think we need to move with this, because we definitely need to get the audits started, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So when the audit will start if we approve?
In the timeline, I put around August fifteenth.
When's it due with the state?
It's due with the state, six months after your fiscal year end, which will be November thirty.
So I'll make a move that we put this on the agenda to appoint, to accept an offer for an audit firm, our recommendations of our firm representing this, our county firm.
Second.
Hey, Roll Call vote, Councilwoman Cynthia Bragg James?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Langer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hutter?
Yes.
So.
Do it now?
Yeah.
So, as I said, we received four proposals for audit services for your fiscal year ended. I have a tabulation form that I had, we had handed out in your packets. The council is, I mean, the administration is recommending that we go with the firm of Erickson-Quintel. They are a firm based out of New Orleans. They have about fifty people on board. They also do have a Baton Rouge office, which was the former offices of Provost Selter. They recently merged with them about a year ago, but they're a very reputable firm. They are a part of the VDO Seedment Alliance. VDO Seedment is a top-six largest firm in the world. They are a member of the VDO Seedment Alliance, and they are approved by the legislative board.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number fifteen. D.P.W. report.
Good evening, all. I'm gonna start with the street drainage department. They're picking up litter and trash, patching potholes, cutting grass and weedies, taking care of small miscellaneous drainage work orders, straightening up signs, cleaning up their trucks and equipment, and they're digging ditches on North Bryant Street. The utility department is repairing water leaks all over the city. Got a lot of L.A. one-call tickets coming in. They're installing water and gas meters. They're flushing dead-end mains and all brown water calls that comes in. We got a good report from TMB on our water wells and toilets. They're taking water samples every day. They clean up their trucks and equipment, building and grounds and decorations, cutting grass and weedies, cleaning bathrooms, picking up litter at the ballparks, cutting the baseball fields and keeping them ready to be played on, cleaning the squash park, fountains and the fish pond at the Jemalai Park, repair the fence at the swimming pool, and they're cleaning up their equipment and trucks as well. Sewer department, checking lift stations, a lot of L.A. one-call tickets coming in also, cleaned up their trucks and equipment. They remove a motor to clean at lift station number twenty-six, which is on Biden North Sees. They cleaned their wet wells at lift station number fourteen by Marathon Gas Station on West Highway thirty. They installed new electrical panel at lift station number thirty-one, which is off of Nelson Street. They changed the pump heads at wastewater plant for disinfection, and they got the cranes inspected at lift station nineteen, which is on East Corner View, and at the wastewater plant, and the guys picked up a hundred and twenty-two bags of litter. Also, I would like to reemphasize to the council and the citizens of Gonzales about the great and dedicated women and men that work for the city of Gonzales.
Number sixteen. Engineer report.
All right, Mayor and council, brief report for you this evening. Just a couple things. So the comprehensive plan, RFQ, as most of you are likely aware, is out on the streets right now. That is due back on July third. So deadline for any questions is June twenty-fourth, so that's coming up here shortly. Haven't received any questions yet, but are seeing some good responses coming out, so good, good interest there. Freeland Jackson update for everybody. As we all know, it's under construction. We still have an end date of the end of this year, December of twenty-five. Last update for you all, they had completed the asphalt work. They're working on curb and gutter now, and the steel building materials are due to come in at the end of this month, so we should start seeing some activity coming out of the ground here shortly. Our Lady of the Lake Connector Road, we do have a meeting pending here shortly with all of the stakeholders coming up. the stakeholders coming up, so it was for this week. We postponed that to a later date to make sure we can have the engineer there as well that's doing that project, so that'll be coming up as well as an upcoming project. Heritage Crossing, we are waiting on comments back from D. O. T. D. relating to the intersection improvements at Heritage Crossing at thirty and forty-four, as well as that lift station that is across the street from Heritage off of forty-four. And last project is the D. O. T. D. grant recently awarded to the city for local roadway striping and signage. So we just reviewed ninety-five percent of the plans on that in connection with D. O. T. D. That will be happening on three roads, South Saint Landry, North Coolidge, and West Worthy. It's gonna be new signs, new roadway striping, new center line and edge lane markers, so it's a road safety grant, so happy to get that moving forward. Any questions? Feel free to take them.
Any updates on the Kennedy Ice Drainage Project?
Kennedy Ice Drainage Project, so they are nearing phase two completion. The engineer's working on the documents now, so when I say completion, I mean design of phase two. He's working on documents now. He did recently submit a proposal request for additional fees for the remainder of phase two, so we are reviewing that right now with a recommendation coming shortly to administration there, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Number seventeen. Motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second.